Welcome all to the this edition of the APC virtual meeting. I have an announcement to read first, it's boring, but we have to do it. This is a meeting of the town of Qualakin Beach Advisory Planning Commission. Due to the current pandemic and pursuant to the March 26, 2020 ministerial order number M083, members of the APC may participate in this meeting utilizing electronic or other communication facilities, and members of the public will not be allowed to attend this meeting. After this meeting, an audio recording will be made available to the public in lieu of attendance at the live meeting. The recording will be available on the town's website until such time as the application or issue is no longer under consideration by council, at which point the recording will be deleted. The APC makes recommendations to council on matters respecting land use, community planning, or related bylaws and permits as referred by council or the director of planning. The APC is advisory and does not have any direct approval, ownership, or authority over matters that are referred to it. Council may or may not adopt recommendations made by this commission. The following will be the sequence for each agenda item. First is a short introduction of the application by town staff, next the presentation by the applicant, third questions to the applicant by members, fourth would be the discussion amongst the members, and fifth will be the motions. And to ensure that the meeting is productive and respective, we request that the applicants only speak in response to questions. So we will move to the agenda. May I have a motion to adopt the agenda as presented? Put your hand, but done second by Susan. Discussion called a question, all those in favor? Posed of any carried? Approval of the minutes, I have a motion that we approve the minutes of our June 10th meeting 2020 mark, so moved. That's now a second discussion, all those in favor? Carried. Is there any business arising from the minutes? Seeing none, we'll move to new business. The new business is a zoning app amendment at 850 Eagle Crest Drive slash 2075 Island Highway. Application for a 16 lot subdivision. And again, as we did in our previous meetings, today's agenda is an application requiring both an OCP and land use amendment. And we will consider each separately. So we would ask then for Luke to provide us an introduction.
Thank you Chair, as you mentioned, this meeting council or APC will be considering both a zoning amendment, which is a change to what's permitted on this property and an OCP amendment, which is a change to the overarching land use plan for the town. So on the site, there's no development permit required. It's not within a forming character DP area or any other DP area. However, design and aesthetics are certainly important to the project and so there are discussions in here about about the aesthetic aspect of it. The memo that you have before you today identifies some key points that APC may want to consider as a part of their discussion. You'll note that this is different than the APC memo that was prepared in, I guess that would have been March when when things were sort of canceled at the start of the pandemic, but essentially what this is, is trying to first of all, allow for a nice structured discussion. And also when we reviewed the previous memo, we realized that some of the earlier staff recommendations were somewhat peppered throughout the memo and, you know, to make sure that the APC has the ability to craft your own opinions on these issues, we we sort of laid out the facts as simply and clearly as possible, but without recommendation, because those would be added at a future stage when it actually goes to a council agenda. So with that, I have nothing further to add. Back to you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Luke. Before we, before the applicants, before the Toddsons make the presentation, I just want to remind the members of the APC that we're going to call on each member in rotation to pose first of all, questions or ask or provide or seek clarifications on the presentation and the material presented. And now if you have a comment that can't wait until it's your turn to speak, please raise your hand and I will note it and get back to you before the next member speaks. And then we'll follow that procedure through each of the elements of the comments and clear, or I should say the questions and clarifications, comments, and then our discussion of the motions. Okay, so I will turn it over to Karen Thompson.
Mr. Chair, before we start with that, I wanted to bring up one, one thing. We had a few members of the public that had trouble following the last meeting, and it's because they they can't necessarily see what people are looking at. So if I could just ask that whenever possible, if you could reference a page number or something so that someone following the meeting later can can look at the same thing at the same time. So for example, if you say I'm looking at page three of the council or of the APC agenda, then they can flip to page three and follow along.
I'll leave that and after the applicants to to start that process and okay, Toddson.
Okay, thank you, Luke, and thank you to all the APC commission for being here with us today. I thought I would start with a little brief outline of our background for this, most of you wouldn't know us. And I'm sorry, but I probably have to read a lot of it. I get nervous and think my mind book a blank, so it's even telling about ourselves, I have to read it. We moved to Qualakin Beach from Port Alberni in 1980. And we've raised our family here and we will remain even when we reach our retirement years, continuing to garden, play golf, and volunteer in our community. We began our career here, starting a company where Rick designed and framed houses for other builders. This quickly changed to us designing and building custom homes with our own clients and our company name is Toddson Design and Construction. Over the years, we've created several subdivisions in the Oceanside area. These are Point Mercer and Meadowwood, which both are on the eastern boundary of Qualakin Beach. Just outside the, right, literally on the boundary. Nile Landing is out in Bowser. And we did a small four lot subdivision at the bottom of Chester Road in Qualakin Beach about five years ago. Through both our design and construction company, our design and construction company and land development projects, we've employed local professionals, trade suppliers, craft persons and laborers, which have all contributed to our local economy over the years. That we feel that this newest project would not only increase Qualakin Beach's tax base, but would offer the same employment opportunities at a time when we may need economic stimulation. And we just want to add that before we delve into the discussion, Rick's the presentation fully and the discussions, we'd all like you to know that we've kept many important aspects in mind and have taken advice from many people into consideration when we've been planning this development over the last five years. And well, no development can meet all of the criteria and hopes within the very documents of current and past OCPs. The sustainability plan or from the smart growth principles. Our intent has always been to work with the town to develop what is best for this piece of land and for the community. And we've done this by considering how the land use can best accommodate the many layers and suggestions within these bylaws, policies and plans, and to help ease the ongoing shortage of housing. So I just had a little bit of background might be helpful to start. So Rebecca, what we would need then is the set of slides to start. And Rick, let's start going over those.
Oh, yes. Thanks, Rebecca. So this aerial view of the property, you'll note that oh, disappeared. Okay, you'll note where it says Clubhouse Drive that leads off of the Island Highway. We'll show two things. It's going to show the 18th fairway of the golf course and a project for Eagle Crest is called the cottages development. They're, they have 18 building lots in there for 18 homes, single family homes, which sits on 3.2 acres of land. So that runs right down to Eagle Crest Drive. And you'll see that Eagle Crest Drive has goes right up into the property where we're we're proposing to develop right to the property line. It's at 6.5 acre parcel of land. And at the moment, that is now a road dedication that leads west to the neighboring property. It's not being used for anything. It's still treed or some vegetation in there. Anyway, I think this is just going to show you that from the highway, there's two parcels of land. There's a five acre parcel and a second one. And each of those have two homes on them, or each of them have one home on them. And that that will stay the way that is. That's we live in one home and so we have a neighbor, a friend in the other. And so we're just talking about the 6.5 acres at this point. And you'll see that from that property, other than the cottages of Eagle Crest, we're probably anywhere from 800 to 1,000 feet away from any other home that is either below or or to the west of us. So anyway, just to say it's a very private parcel of land. And I think we could go to the next page, Rebecca. Yeah. Okay, so here. If you look from the highway, the Island Highway, you're going to see a white line that shows a an existing driveway, which was created many, many years ago. We just improved it so that we can have proper access to the home. Right now, we travel from the highway to the first home and our neighbor travels from Eagle Crest Drive through the lane way to his home. So that, you know, because our parcel is separate and we have our own driveway. I wanted to mention that about four and a half years ago, we had the hydro here to find a way to bring hydro and services to the two homes. And we had two choices. One choice was to go overhead power or or go underground. And in doing so, hydro would have requested a minimum of 60 foot wide cut from the highway down the western side of the property and then turn back towards the home, both homes. And, you know, that would be, that would, was going to be devastating to us because all the trees that would have to come out. And even though going overhead would have been about 25% of the cost of going underground, we chose to go underground and preserve that tree area back there. A, it was, it ended up being a good thing, even though our hydro bills are higher because it's so much energy to bring it down, we chose to do it that way. So that was a good thing.
But to cover those costs.
And, yeah.
It's mocking.
So anyway, what else can I say? So eventually, if we can do a subdivision in that six and a half acres as we propose it, there will be a driveway still going to that property. That won't change. Anyway, I think we could go next slide, Rebecca.
Although I wonder if the last one is better because the lines are not showing up on this.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, well, I guess the this, this is going to show that we're, we are proposing 16 building lots inside of six and a half acres. And we are providing a one acre parcel of land on the west side for park dedication. That's 5% of the entire parcel of land, which is of the 16.5 acres. So that gives a good, good size park, just under an acre. And on the east side, where we are not including that as a park area, but there's going to be a tree preservation area. They will be owned by the lot owners, but they cannot use it for any types of building. It has to be left green and and hopefully the trees that are state are there to they stay there. We don't expect that there's a problem there. And the one acre parcel of land on the west side is already treed fairly heavily in some parts of it. But we do have a tree management plan where in one of the reports, it's going to say that they will have to go in and remove any danger old trees or trees that, you know, may be rotten or not going to survive very well. Just, and that's a good thing. It's just going to help everything else grow better. So anyway, I think.
And I think the fact that this drawing on here, it was a conceptual drawing and since then, some lines have changed. Other things will show as we go forward to change from this initial concept.
Yeah.
Slightly.
Yeah.
So we could probably move to the survey drawing.
Survey, yeah.
That one.
Yeah, so this, this is going to show you the park area better. Where after talking with the planning department, we, we have done one extra thing on this part is that is on lot eight on the end of the site there. There's going to be a pathway back to the road. And so it actually creates approximately 1,200 linear feet of walking trail. I think that's a good thing. I think, you know, parks are, can be of different shapes. I think the future is going to be more linear parks because you get more travel in them. You know, if you, you're going to end up with eight lots with park behind them. If anything happens beyond us, that would, that could be the same thing where there could be eight lots that abut to it again. So there's going to be more, more homes with parkland behind them. If it does, if it can go linear, it will, it would be a great trail for people. I don't think we're trying to create a playground park of any kind, like the square park where typically, I think those are more for playgrounds.
Well, one of the reasons we thought this park bordering the entire six and a half acre border there, it helps buffer the neighbors' property from the development as well.
As well, yeah, yeah. Okay, well, I think we can carry on from there. I think, so these pictures that are going to come up next, I think I just wanted everybody to see that two things here is, one is going to be our, in our design guidelines and building scheme. This is an example of a home we did recently on Chester Road behind the Heritage Park. And what we're promoting to do with the lots here is to encourage side yard driveways so that on one side of the property, there'll be enough space for the vehicle to take, go down to the back of the property where we would like to see the garages. In both cases, whether it be graduates for the home or for a guest suite or for a separate cottage. And we feel it's a good look instead of having garages up front. Of course, this would be also providing more space between the homes by having a driveway down the one side. The setbacks will be greater than what would be normal. And yeah, I mean, I can get into another thing with our design guidelines too, that we as far as the size of homes always, and we, I, I get that. And what we tend to do in all developments we've done is to avoid what we call massing. So there's different ways of doing that. So the way we've always looked at it is you have to have a roof line break the first level to the second level. And that the second level can only be a percentage of what's below it and and within the walls of what's below it. So we call that a story and a half look. And I don't know if you're familiar with that, but I think 99% of the homes we built are typically in that, that, that design. Meadowwood is going to be a prime example. If you drove through there, Point Mercer. Even now, they're the same everywhere that we've done guidelines for. Yeah, I think that's good. I think you could carry on with that, the next one. So this is just the rendering of what you just saw. I did that recently just so that you can see maybe more of a three dimensional look. I think too, it's a, we need to make the point that we are not intending to to discourage somebody to build a 1,600 square foot home for a couple, if that was the case. You know, we're not going to say that a 2,800 square foot house won't be built either. So there will be, there will be some variances in that. But we are promoting the secondary suites and or or separate cottage. We are hoping to get half of that in this, on the site. And there are two properties, and I can't remember the number. There can be lot one and lot 16 that would sit up against Eagle Crest Drive. Those are the only two lots that we can actually create duplexes on, and that would work real well. And I can show you maybe further on, on the next slide. Yeah, well, this is going to show you what a typical house plan. Now, we didn't want to get too carried away with these drawings, but it would just show you that example. If you're, if you're driving down the side of the property on the fence line, you will see that there's been two garage spaces for the main home and where there's a separate cottage with also a parking area. Doesn't have to be fully enclosed, but at least screened. But what we're trying to do is find a way to have two two families live on, on one lot, but each have a yard as well. So if you look behind the cottage, you would see whether it be a hedge or some type of fencing to lead, to give them some privacy and a yard of their own. I think it's really important to do that. And when you talk about lot sizes, I, some people might feel these lots tend to be a bit large. And and we get that, but the problem is you can't. There's a limitation. If you're going to start building a secondary suite and try to give them a yard and have your own yard, plus a driveway to get to the back. You, you know, there's some limitation to how that lot's going to size should end up. And so we're, we're hoping to go with just under 80 feet in width, the lots to make this work. Yeah, I think the next, okay, this is just the same thing, except it shows going down the side of the building, you would have, again, three base, three spaces for cars on the inside and 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 a garage that would have a second story to it. So this would be a in building suite, right? And, you know, some people like that. It would be less expensive to build this sort of style with a suite attached to the building. I don't know. I think the renter would rather have it separate, but.
And then it provides more space for gardens as well and trees.
It can provide more space for gardens and trees too. But anyway, I mean, it's just an example of the two styles that we were hoping to promote. And again, it's just to keep garage doors off the face of the property. And yeah, okay, next picture. This is just another rendering of a style. It would be maybe a smaller style home. But it just gives you some idea of how to put spaces in the second level without it being right out, a full two story wall. So we're trying to avoid that. Yeah. Okay, next one, I guess. So here's the one that would show on lot one or 16, a duplex style where you would see on, on the length of the lot, you'd see a double garage with the, the, the house for the first unit. And you see where the dotted line in the tree is that would then, next to that is the second unit, which would enter from the proposed roadside that we're, we want to do. So when you go past the duplex or drive, it would be hard to tell it is a duplex sometimes. You know, we're trying to find a way to have a look that's not going to just advertise it as a duplex. And I think it's a good idea.
Although we do admit this one looks very plain and it has not had a lot of thought put into it. We would enhance it definitely more, more so than that.
Yeah, I mean, if it's totally landscape, you wouldn't see the house. So we can, we can put trees everywhere just so you can get the, I'm just trying to give you the idea of how you can enter a duplex. Yeah, okay, and I think that's.
So just the next slide.
The next slide? Yeah.
So this was on Chester Road where we did a four lot subdivision. And with the town, we could place a tree and vegetation covenant to protect from the roadway and it goes into the property. On the photo on the left where you can see the cedar rails, that that whole section was under covenant. And I think if you drove past there today, you'd be quite impressed that people have left it or they have to leave it and and garden it nicely. And so this is the, the look we're thinking of for the eastern boundary where they would have a three to four meter tree and cup, tree and vegetation covenant. So just to show you that example.
Yeah.
And the next slide. And this is the Meadowwood subdivision. And it was a picture we took in January, but it shows you that we do our best to leave trees when we can plant the boulevard trees. These are all a beautiful sunset maple. On the right hand photo is a park that, part of it was already there from some other subdivision. Subdividing that had happened with other developers and we added a couple of lots to that and also put through a walking trail that started, a looping walking trail that starts right where you see right there, right down to White Pine Way.
Another road, yeah.
Down to another road and it's well used. People walk through there all the time. And the next slide. The last slide is Nile Landing in Bowser. And again, you can see where as many trees as could be left are. Most, some of those are gone now on the big fir trees because people over years have taken more down. But we did plant as well cherry trees along the boulevard just to make it look prettier.
Yeah, here's a property to where it's about 2,000 feet in, in length and it was a large site, 32 acres. And I think there were 30 homes that we, lots that we put in there, or 32. Anyway, as far as giving up parkland at 5%, you could see that on 30 acres, that would have been about an acre and a half, I think, no, you know, fine. About an acre and a half or a bit more, but what we did on this site is that we, we donated beyond that. We, we gave up eight and a half acres. And it stretches the full 2,000 feet on the, on the, on the west side of Nile Creek, which we put trails in. I think we, our trails ended up about halfway. And then it actually, from that point on, you can make your own way through there. It worked out real well. The neighborhoods are happy about it. There are a lot of people walk it and we'll go sit down on a log and and stuff like that. And, and it does have an, an exit out the back somewhere to another road. Yeah. Yeah.
So I think that's all we really wanted to let you know to start with. And because we, we knew that as we go through and you have your questions, far more will come up that we haven't addressed through this presentation.
Yeah, well, thanks for, oh, we did okay.
Great. But before we go to the, the questions, could you speak to the OCP and the amendment that's required to allow this to go forward? Just to see where your, 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 your feelings are in terms of how you we can, we can support the, the amendment to taking it out of the state residential and putting it into a single family.
Yeah.
Would that be more a question for Luke? I'm not sure. I know. Would that be more a question for Luke? I'm, I'm not sure. I know how to address that.
Okay.
Well.
Uh, I, I'm just thinking, you, you, you understand the OCP and the restrictions that, uh, are placed on, on that, on your property to be able to develop it as you wish. So there are elements of, of it, that there's the policy um, regarding the, uh, preservation of the forest, uh, the two, um
Yep.
Uh, two, two buildings per, per parcel, those sorts of things that, um, are going to, uh uh, come in conflict, uh, conflict with what you're requesting.
Oh, okay. So, so originally, we, um, in talking with the town, when we were just purchasing the property, I, I hope this addresses it correctly. What you're asking. Um, we, we separated the two homes as we sho- showed on that second drawing. Um, because in, in one of the OCPs, it had suggested, um, a clustering by, by open space subdivision. So that's where we kept our two properties, um, together and where we didn't have to take down very many trees. And, and then left the, the, the bottom section so that the development potential could be clustered all into one area, so thereby preserving as much of the forest as we could. Um, and even then, we, we, knowing what layer had, we, we, that's why the park area was not, um, disturbed. Um, believing that that would be a good location for a park, given um, that i- in the OCP and then the, um, Greenway map, um, that actually shows a, a, a green area there that should be a park designation in the future. Should a road ever need to go through the estate properties. So I don't know, does that, does that help with?
Maybe not, maybe not. Maybe I could, we could, I can add something. Um, and I don't know i- i- if you have the drawing for that, we, I know we have one here.
Um, Rebecca, could you bring up the drawing that I sent yesterday of the, the full estate properties?
Sure.
Oh, yeah, we can. Yes. Oh, thank you. That's great, Rebecca. That's, uh, I think, I think if everybody can see, um uh, where it shows the island highway west, um, uh, main road. Um, you'll see that the property twenty seventy-five, right beside the fairway, um, is again, uh, one parcel, which is five acres. And then eight fifty is a, a second five acre parcel. And R one, which is the, uh, property in question that, uh, we, we're, um, wanting to develop. Um, we, I want, there's a few things to look at here. If you look at the black dotted line, that is called a tree preservation area. That, that's where, it shows it clearly, that it goes down what would one day be, maybe a, a street called Hollywood Road. And it, on the other side, um, towards the College Inn, there's a seventy-five meter, uh buffer along the highway, again, to Cherry, what would be maybe one day called Cherry Road. So that is the tree preservation area. And then there's the conservation area, which is, is that colored green on there? Yeah, the green area, uh, which is Milner Gardens. Um, uh, the, the, there, there's a different, uh, title to that space. Um, so we did look at that. Um, so in ours, our property, we, we, other than the seventy-five meters, we we do have the right to clear the property. We're not, we're, it's not what we're doing. We're not intending to do it all, but, uh um, that, you know, it, it is part of how it's set up. Uh, anyway, um it, it's obvious that the parcel land that we're talking about, the six and a half acres that we want to sub, uh, uh, develop, it, uh, is in line with what would be Eagle Crest Drive that had, has always been there. Uh, and we are just at the, at the end of that street. Um, I should mention too that all the services are there as well. Um, I don't know, hopefully that helps, uh, to give you some explanation of the land and the uh, uh, the restrictions behind some of it. Um, yeah. Okay, thanks.
That's great. Thank you, Rick. Thank you, Linda. Uh, so we'll move into, uh, questions or clarifications. Uh, let's see my, my rotation list today. Questions, we're gonna start with Dawn. And then move through Petronella, Susan, Mark, and then myself. So. Dawn?
Um, I'm just wondering what kind of, um um, materials you're planning on using for things like, or suggesting in your building scheme for, um driveways and such, and whether or not there's gonna be some kind of rain management with all, within the properties.
Yeah, I can answer that, uh, Dawn. Um, yeah, that, that's a good question. Uh, well, uh, I think to start with, um uh, we, we talked about rain management. Um, so as the proposed subdivision shows, um, I think when you add up what we call would be the park area and, and the green space on the east side, um, which we, uh, know that that is our water retain, uh, generally of the water retention area um, so far on the property. But as far as driveways are concerned, and because of the lengths of those driveways, they're gonna range anywhere from a hundred to a hundred and forty feet in depth, uh, there would be probably my guess that eighty percent of that will be a permeable material. Um, and so that's a good thing, and, uh, there's really nice ways to do that. Um, I can't say that, uh, in front of the uh, garage doors, there may be some concrete because someone wants to clean their car and so forth. But, um, there is also the street boulevards that are, are gonna be permeable and the yards themselves. So we're not, we don't have a lot of homes inside six, six and a half acres. That's, uh, if you really add it up, um, you're typically gonna be about twenty-five to twenty-six homes on, on six and a half acres. So we, we kind of reduce, reduce the amount of homes to give more, leave more green space.
So we have been planning on, um, the bulk being gravel driveways and with, um, paving stones as well, which are are always permeable. Um, and for patio areas, we would suggest that as well.
Okay. Thank you. That's all I had. Thank you. Uh, Petronella.
Okay, well, I'm a little, um, I guess about, and finding it difficult to, before trying to separate the question of the land use and the actual proposal. Um, I find it very difficult to separate the two.
Oh, no, the, Petronella, maybe clarification. Uh, they are hand and glove. There's no question about it. But, uh, one requires the other. Uh, the OCP has, should, has to be changed to allow this to to, to, uh, to come forward. And, um, without the OCP being changed, uh, this, from what I can gather, uh land use, uh, change or application couldn't happen. So they, they have to go hand in glove, but one has to be done before the other. They have to be done different and separately. There are two separate bylaws. Bylaws, so.
Right. I understand that. But, okay, I'll try to keep my questions regarding the land use then and the OCP.
Try to, if you can, to separate the two. I know they do come hand in glove, but but there are certain elements of the OCP that are very, very specific, and, and they're not that many. There's more in terms of land use.
Right. So within the OCP, if you look at the general feel of the OCP, to my mind, and it does say in the document itself that the OCP has always been very strong on environmental protection and quality of life. And that it proposes to protect those aspects of Qualicum Beach that give it its character and scale in both developed and its natural environment. And that the natural ecosystems are preserved, the, the OCP wants to preserve and enhance the natural ecosystems and pervert, preserve the town's heritage, uh, be it through buildings, landmarks, significant trees or forests, and that the residential, estate residential forms part of the green, the town's green belt. And that, uh, the re- estate residential should be protected as large lot forested areas. So I suppose my question is, uh rather than a comment, I don't know if I have a question about that, but it's just, I don't see how developing that particular parcel of land within the, um estate residential can possibly meet those guidelines or those, uh requirements or wishes of the OCP.
That's a very specific question.
Yes.
And the answer will be.
Well, what, just Rick will answer the question better than I will, but just want to start is how I had mentioned at the very beginning. Um, that i- i- if we won't meet all the criteria. There, there's so much criteria throughout the OCP um, that no development will need it. Um, and I, I understand what you, you're, you're saying about protecting this area, but with looking at the availability of, um, lands and within Qualicum Beach, we have to look to the future as well. But we're really running out of areas that can be developed. And, and I, and this is, um, on the border of the estate properties, so it sort of seems unnatural that if something has to happen, it would begin here, not to say that, and it would go further. No one knows what the future would hold for the future planning. Um, a- and, and it can only go so far with Milner Gardens being there and, and the tree preservation zone. Um, so we just feel that we're outside of some of the areas that, um, where planners in the, in, in the past had, um, had thought that something would happen here, and that's why there's, um um, things in place that, and, and I could just mention a few of them, um, that they have talked about um, previously about putting in, um, there is a road network already in place. And there used to be at one point, um, a whole major road collector going through, shown on the maps, is going straight through the estate properties. And this has since been downgraded to a trail network. Um, and by, as, as I've mentioned, both the tree preservation zone and the conservation land zoning. Um, they, they only encompass those, um, that area of Milner Gardens. Um, uh, just a suggestion, um, in the past OCPs about the clustering through principles of open space subdivision. Um, and showing, and here's one I'll actually read, um, to you. Um, that just shows that somebody in the past had been planning that this kind of thing may happen at some time. Um it's, um, just in section two, two, seven, three of the OCP, it has said, um, "A third neighborhood park has been proposed for the Eagle Crest area in the land presently occupied by large estates. If the time comes for the construction of a road through these estates," is showing in the proposed road network plan, "Land should be set aside for the development of a neighborhood park." And even in today's OCP, there is a, quite a large green dot showing where, um approximately where a park should be designated for. So this is what we've gone by, that, um it's, the future is here and, um
Yeah, I, I think, I think it's important to say too, um, it's always, I always find unfortunate unless somebody is, uh, got the time, but it would be always a benefit to walk the property. And be happy to show you. And, and I think the reason for that is to to actually see that the, the land has been, uh, generally cleared and, uh, y- some years ago. Uh, I think four or five years ago, in, in that range. And, um, of course, we left, uh, the, the peripheral, uh areas, um, where one, the, uh, on the west side and the east side, and all other trees on site. Um, w- we're expecting to leave them until a homeowner says that he may have to take it down or not. But other than that, where the road is proposed, I think I, and that's probably exaggerating, but there's probably only four cedar trees, or, or quite small that are gonna be removed for that road network. There, there is no trees there. And, um if you see the history of these properties, uh, even our neighbors and the neighbors beyond that, um, you, you have to remember, these properties were logged many years ago. All the trees were taken down. Um, I, I noticed there's only one vet tree on our site in, in sixteen acres that was left behind. Um, but when they did the logging back then, they did it, it, they were very rough. Uh, they used equipment, they ran through it, and they, they made a mess of the ground. Sure, we have lots of new trees, and those same trees are growing constantly. We, we have a yard full of brand-new, one-foot-tall, two-foot-tall fir trees. They just come out of the ground like constantly. But at the same time, um, we have a lot of what we call dead forest here. Um, it's never been managed i- in our, in our site, so we've been constantly working at that. And it's, uh, you know, I would say we put a good, you know, a good month of effort, uh, uh, every year so far in, in in certain areas of our site, just to get it to, uh be happy again. So things will grow and the underbrush will grow and the ferns and, uh anyway, it needs help. You can't just let a forest be what it is forever without a bit of help. It's, anyway, that's my point. Yeah.
Okay.
If that helped you, uh, Petronella, I don't know. Uh, by looking at the property is a good thing.
Uh, well, I have driven around it. I didn't think I should trust that.
Welcome anytime.
So a couple of things about that, when you say the future is here. Um, I think that town has constantly been trying to look to the future and control growth, manage growth, um, have good developments within the areas that um the residents perceive should be developed. And your property is within the estate residential, and it's not within the urban containment boundary. So it presents a lot of problems, and it really goes counter to what I think the town is trying to accomplish in its planning. Um, it's, um
You're, you're getting into comment now, which we can save for.
Shall I also ask questions about the proposal itself? Is that, or are we trying to keep things separate?
Yeah. Yes, go ahead.
Yes, go ahead. Okay. So, um one of the things that you've sort of highlighted in your presentation is the uh, providing rental suites, whether it's through the garden suites or secondary suites. And, um I'm not sure, the size that I see in your, your sketch is about six hundred and fifty square feet, six hundred and sixty-two.
For the average suite, yeah.
For the average suite.
Yeah.
And the one-bedroom, essentially a one-bedroom suite. Um, I have concerns about saying that they're rental suites. I think they're quite small. Um, and I think that, uh do you think that, given the, how much these properties are going to cost, um, are the owners really going to be likely to want to rent out the suites? Or would they tend more to use them as guest accommodation or well, I don't think they could use it as Airbnb, but I suppose that's a possibility. Um, you haven't made any mention of, uh, green construction, any kind of what standards you would be using for what standards you would be using for green construction. Also for the parking, you would need parking for both the house itself and for the rental unit.
Yeah.
So you're going to have increased vehicular traffic. And that again seems counter to what the town is trying to accomplish. You are a fair distance from the town's center. So it just I guess if you say the future is here. What do you think the benefits are to the town in the long term, not the short term? There may be more work construction wise. There would be a small increase in the housing stock. But in the long term, how does this help to accomplish the long term goals?
Okay, so you've asked a few questions though, so we'll try to answer them separately. When you ask about the question about the size of the units, well, that would be flexible for a guest cottage. Or, or that, whether it's an attached or detached unit. And I don't think that we're the ones to say today. What I would do if I was building a house, or if you were building a house, how big would you make it? We don't know that answer because we don't know how we want to rent it. But I did go as far as asking single people what, what they would think would be reasonable and preferable for them and how big that unit should be. So I've got that number from people that rent today. People in Qualicum. And then if you look at the, the person that might build a suite or a guest cabin, a guest cottage. It may be that they may want their apparent even in there that's already living here. That needs to reduce in, in size of their building and maybe want something smaller and close to family. So there's different ways you could use those spaces. I, I think if that can answer one of your questions, your, that second question about the driveway and parking. Well, the drawing does show that you can, i- if you have a driveway that goes down the entire length of a lot. You could probably fit four times the amount of vehicles than on a regular lot with a garage on the front of the road, right? I mean, you look at the distance, there, there, you have a lot of parking onsite and probably be less need to have offsite parking with, with a length of driveway like that. I think that's to answer two questions.
Well, the vehicle traffic is counter to making a more walkable community. But to that, I would also say that you know, and that is one of the goals definitely in the planning is to develop the village neighborhood and that is happening. But we don't believe that everything can happen in the village neighborhood. That we do have to do some developments within our town boundaries. And that our town boundaries are not very large, even from north to south or west to east. We're a very small community. And truly, most of it is walkable for anyone who's reasonably healthy. Even from here, we can walk uptown through the trails, the trail network. So we don't feel that we're so far out of town. Just to answer that question. And also, also about the vehicular traffic. I look, you'd be better to and, and say this maybe, but I believe Country Club Drive is has been designed as a collector route.
Main thorough through, yeah.
Country Club, Pintail, Eagle Crest Drive, Pintail up to Johnstone Road, I believe is meant as a collector road.
Main thorough through, yeah.
And, and even talk about the green construction. And I just wanted to say, Petronella, but we feel like one of the long-term benefits to Qualicum is the increased tax base that we need. And that will happen with in many different ways, but this would add to that.
It would also help Eagle Crest. It would help the golf club.
Right.
We are today finding that we're, if you look at any golf course right now, you're going to see all of a sudden a lot more younger people golfing. I don't know, that's a good thing. I, I, I'm really happy to see that. And I think we're, by putting in rental suites too, we're hoping to bring some young people in the area. I think that would be a benefit in a lot of ways. They're, they're healthy. They need places to live near Qualicum. There's not a lot in town for them a- a- at the prices that they are. So I, I think it's good what we're trying to do.
And, and because it is at the golf course and with the restaurant there, it does provide at least somewhere that people living close by can walk to for a coffee or a meal, meet with somebody, organize a party.
Yeah, they're close to the beach and they can walk, they can bike ride. Eagle Crest is an awesome place to, to, to take a walk and a bike ride. It's all flat, so much of it. And, and it's, it's, you know, I, I've lived here for thirty-five years, so in, in Eagle Crest and it's great.
And we did to address the toilet with green construction. We didn't put that in our presentation only because we thought this would come up throughout the conversations.
Okay, so green construction, I, I, I see that always gets asked many times over and over. And well, you know, there's the builders that have licenses that are i- i- in all of British Columbia are obligated to build to a certain standard. There's a minimal. And the, 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 the idea of all builders with licenses. We, we are to achieve a certain step code up until I think the year two thousand thirty-two. We are hoping to achieve net zero. So if you look at the step codes and of a building itself. You, you want to look at the numbers one to five. And if I think right now they're running between two and three. We, we are now just, just this year, we're going to do a, a blower test on a new construction that we're doing, a home that we've been building. I think I would say about eight years now, that style of construction. And this will be the first home that's going to have triple pane windows throughout. And we've decided to do a test on it and to see actually if we can meet net zero. Zero net. So we're, if we get there, we, we, we are not going to try to attempt to go beyond that. Not for a long time. You, you, when people talk about the green build and all these different things, it's all great. But you have to remember, it costs money. It's not free. And you know, we, we talk about affordability and all those different things. And you know, the higher, the more we talk about that, but then we talk about how good or how much better the house can be. It, it doesn't become affordable. So we have to be careful.
But having said that, just.
Does that make sense to you? Like, we have to be a bit careful with that. I mean, we get it. All, all the water that goes through a building is already restricted, restricted at every faucet. All the water closets are restricted. So we, we, we were getting there, but you have to remember, it all costs more money. It's, it, you have to add, it's not.
Well, and the heating systems are so much better now and low and no flu, uh, flu emissions. Just the LED lighting. There, there's so many things that have become so standard in the building industry, at least to our, the homes that we do. Have become more standard that are just naturally green building.
You know, for the last couple of years, we've installed all homes with electric chargers for cars.
Yeah.
So we're doing all that, you know, we're not. Yeah, anyway, just trying to tell you that. So it may go look at one of our houses and you'll see that, all that stuff that goes on. We like a lot of wood products because they're local and they look good. And you know, there's also the maintenance issues of things that we have to be a little bit flexible with for elderly people. They don't want the maintenance, so we look at other products. But yeah, anyway.
Okay.
Hope that answered your questions.
Somewhat, yes. I better pass it on. I probably will have other questions.
We'll have another round. Thank you, Petronella. Susan.
Yes, I just wanted to, and I, it may be in the document, I don't think I received the preliminary information on this. Looking for it, but are these buildings, you're going to build them and then sell them? Are you, are you going to wait for the buyers and then build to their specifications? And I guess I'm wondering if that's where the, the form and character of the buildings with the suites cottages for people or where they'll have guests. Is that how it's going to work for this piece of property?
Yeah, okay, we can answer that. Like every subdivision that we've done in the area here. Our, our position is that we, we develop all the building guidelines, design guidelines. We attach all of this information along with any restrictive covenants, easements to the site that may be required down the road. And that, that, that gets put in the binder. And, and those binders go with each lot. And each, each lot receives a binder. They are obligated to design their home, have their houses designed it within the book. They cannot very, very. Yeah, we're the ones that have to review them. Even, it's really hard when we design a house to review our own. But anyway, that can happen too.
But having to answer your question further, we're planning on building one of the homes to start it off and one of the duplex units. We've never traditionally been a spec builder, but for this, we thought we would do that because it is somewhat different. But in general, we would be offering the properties to sale, for sale to other people to have their custom homes built on.
Yeah, I mean, there's a lot of good builders, excellent builders in the area that, that you know, we, we recommend them anytime. And you know, we, we, we know each other, we work together sometimes. And we're happy with working, having them do, take on some of the projects, of course. We, we are not going to be, no one would be held, held to us on it, no.
Right, okay.
We don't do that.
Is it premature to ask what what you see them being sold for the properties? Yeah, okay.
Anything further?
Covid price. We don't know yet.
There's no such thing as covid price.
No.
Let's see what happens there.
I digress a minute, but it's nuts out there right.
Thanks, Don. Mark's turn.
All right, I have a couple of questions, more comments to follow in the discussion, but two specific questions. Noticed in the staff memo that says this property is only partially serviced. And so the minimum parcel size under subdivision District B is eight. It should be eight hectares and the development area for this is two point six. So I'm curious how we close that gap or what the intention is in terms of services on this.
Yeah, I can answer that. Good question. I, I probably should have brought that up earlier. Well, about five years ago, it was when we bought the property. And before the development, which is now called the cottages of Eagle Crest. Was going in. We were aware that that might happen, which eventually started. I spent quite a bit of time with the planning department and Bob Weir, the engineer of Qualicum, to, to to ask them the questions on how services are going to be left down at that site once completed. And will it ever restrict any servicing that we might, if, if it all goes well, if we might go ahead with the project. So at the end of the day, and after, also we talked with Hydro, Tel, Cable, because it all came off the highway. In a new form to service the cottages, we just wanted to make sure they got enough for us if we're ever, and not to what we call pitch us, you know, and they all showed us that all services are there. That would be able to service our site. And if you went down Eagle Crest Drive, I think within just thirty feet of our property on the road. That's where all the services are. So we have store and we have sanitary water. Tel, cable, gas is all there. So that was a good thing. So we're not, we do not really have to go offsite very far, if you want to call it that. It's all within thirty, forty feet, which is, that, yeah, anyway.
Second question, I'm just curious about the park dimension. So on page eighteen of the agenda package we have. We have, it shows twenty-one meters at the widest point and six and a half meters on the narrowest point. I'm curious about, it's about just over halfway down. It looks like there's a more of a, it's kind of a gradual narrowing and then it increases the, or decreases the, the width fairly significantly. What's that? What's the width at that point? That's just between lots four and five, if you happen to know.
Six point two meters.
Trying to get a sense of how, what this, this park looks like.
And if I could just say that when the surveyors were doing it to get to because we have to make it reach for the five percent of the whole sixteen point five acres. That's one of the reasons that it's narrowed down, but we wanted it to be wide enough at the one end. I don't know how to explain that.
So where's, where's the question, Ray?
Right here.
Oh, six point five meters?
So the midpoint section, so we have twenty-one in the wider, six and a half on the narrowest and then kind of halfway, right between lots four and five, there's sort of the, the narrowing.
Would still be at the twenty-one.
So that's, that's straight across, so it's.
That would stay at the twenty-one meters, yeah.
Yeah, just curious about that.
It's hard to visualize that. And but it, what this plan, what you're looking at too, if you you might, and I mentioned too, that we've put a walkway that will be at the top of lot eight, so you can walk back onto the road. It, it, I don't know if your drawing shows it, but we also have given up a space again, another walk space at the end of lot nine. If all went well down the road with Eagle Crest, the cottage properties and Eagle Crest Golf Course, we are hoping to get an agreement where that trail can continue on right to Clubhouse Drive. I mean, that would be awesome if they gave us that. But we, we have to, you know, talk to them. We're hoping Bob Weir might help us out with that or loop, but anyway.
Because it helps with the looping for the water.
It would help do a few things. It would help a loop for water. And it, it would be just an awesome place to walk, to be able to go all that way.
I think it can work. My question.
Thank you, Mark. Then I have a couple for you. The building scheme and design guidelines that you have alluded to. How would they be enforced?
And through, through Rick and I.
So.
Well, the way in the future, I don't know how that would work. But in the beginning years, it would be Rick and I.
Form of a covenant against the land that requires them to follow the written.
Yes, yes.
So, and just so you know, Bill, because it's a good question, but like, say, say for instance, now Creek or Meadowwood. Point Mercer as well, in, in those three subdivisions, me and Linda were fortunate enough, even, oh, I don't know, the last house. I think even ten or twelve years after the fact, after there was still that one remaining lot. We were still asked to review the plans, which was great. I mean, I, it, it, yeah, and the law doesn't say that we're obligated to do that. But there's a timeline that we are, and I, I forget when it runs out. But I think after seventy-five percent of the homes are built. I, i- i- if it takes many years, eventually our obligation sort of disappears a bit, but at least the gist is there. but at least the gist is there, right, or the.
Your obligation to, to supervise is gone, or is the whole building scheme of land of design covenant? Is it, is it void then?
If there's a restricted covenant, that goes on title, so that, that goes away.
On title, and then that means any builder after you're out of it would still have to comply to that.
Yeah. And our, our part is the exterior, not the interior.
Right, exactly.
Just so you know that, yeah.
The, you referred to the, the pathway coming down from Lot 8 and you said down to the road. I assume that's to be proposed Eagle Crest extension.
Yeah, we've already.
Is that correct?
To, now, we've been calling that road, we don't know what it would be named, but for now, we've been calling it Woodland Drive.
Okay, no, okay, I'm sorry, yeah. It's going east to west, probably west-east.
Yes.
Along the back of the property, between the.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, that's where it is, it's not down through the park.
And Rebecca, that show, we did a quick little sketch on that other photo I sent yesterday. If you could bring that up, it would explain it maybe better. Yes, that one.
Yeah, there it goes.
So this was on the concept, so it had already changed, the, the depth of the park at that point had already, has already been increased. But what we're suggesting, it may even increase a little bit more and then come down the side of Lot 8.
Yeah.
Okay. And then the intention is to continue that pathway across the Lot 9, if in fact you can come to some agreement to the golf course to extend that over to clubhouse, is that correct?
That's, that's our hope, I mean, yeah, absolutely, I mean, it would be great, I think they're going to, if you look at the 18th fairway, it dead ends beyond the green, of course. And, and then there's a rock wall to the new homes that are going to be built there from, in the cottages. So my thought was that we, I would propose to put, whether it be some type of wood style, type of fencing or, or split rail fence, or, or maybe some hedging on the downside of the, the downside of the trail. And that, what, what that would do, it would give the people down below the privacy, if in case everybody had to walk through there. So we, we don't know how that's going to work, but we, we're proposed to offer the funds to do that to the golf course and have it done. So if, if we could come up with a nice design that works and they're happy with it, they just have to supply the land and we would do, do the rest of it. I think Bob Weir said that maybe there's a chance the town might ask the question as well, only for an easement as, to create an easement for the water system there, instead of having a cleanout at the end of the cul-de-sac, right? Which isn't the end of the world, but, you know, it's just maintenance, right? So we'll see.
Have you spoken with the owners of the golf course?
Uh, no, not the owner, no, don't, never met the owner yet, but just the, the golf manager. And, you know, it, it, that was probably a year and a half ago. And he said that eventually we will just have to ask by request with a letter of some sort for it to get to the owner. And we've not done that.
But he felt it was a good option.
Oh, it would be, it would be, it would be a plus for them too, because it would then allow these residents to walk to their clubhouse, right?
Easier than coming out the road.
Yeah, yeah.
But it wouldn't require them to, if, if the, if the water loop wasn't put in, they would have to give you perpetual easement to, to transfer that, that property, I assume. What happens if, if the, the town was to want with the water loop in and wanted easement across? What is that, Luke, can, can you just maybe explain that? How that works?
Sure, it, it would still require permission from the property owner, so regardless of whether it's, it's the town approaching Eagle Crest Golf Course or the Todstons, it would still need to be the agreement of the golf course owner.
And it just becomes a bunch of legal, legal work then?
Well, we, you know, Bill, we've done it lots before.
Okay.
Oh, yeah, in different subdivisions, we've had to do it and we've actually given permission on other properties for others, other projects to come through properties we've had with easements for servicing. You know, it's not as though you still don't own the land, you, you, you still own it, but there's just an easement rate. In case there's a failure, then there's, at least people would have the right to go fix it.
Yeah, the only reason I ask is it was in council's minutes and in the discussion about that proposed connection, so. To clarify that.
Yeah.
How many duplex sites did you propose?
Two.
Two, and how come only two?
Well, only because if you're looking at the, the lay of the subdivision, the way we've done it, it provides Lot 1 and 16 where you can, you, you can travel a road or a, a road to two sides of that lot. So our, our intent was to have those two lots provide the two duplexes so that, again, aesthetically, when you're driving up Meadow or driving up the road, Woodland Drive, you wouldn't see the duplex. You wouldn't see all entrances off of one, off the front on, on an 80-foot lot. It's hard to fit a duplex in an 80-foot lot in a way, right? Can do it, but you can do it, but it, it's, yeah.
Well, what I'm looking at is, is that the, you'd require an R12 zoning for the duplex or even to, to be able to put in the garden suite, correct?
Yeah.
Yes.
So I'm just, I'm, I'm thinking that if we're trying to meet the OCP's request for increased density and some types of building that's being offered some diversity in, in building style, then to have more duplexes through your complex would be, I think, beneficial in sort of meeting that other side of the OCP's request to increase densities and diversification of housing style. And you also indicated in your materials that you were looking at perhaps maybe 10 or 11 of those lots to be for duplex. So that was a bit of a change there that I.
No.
No, we didn't change, we'd always thought, and we're open to discussion on this for sure, but we thought just the two duplexes and that we'd have 10 or 11 of the other properties for it to be mandatory that a garden suite or a secondary suite would be built. The only thing we were asking is, is to, if we could leave four of the properties open that they didn't have that restriction on them and just being that some, some people may not want to have a secondary suite or a garden suite. And, and ju- just should the, you know, the economy not be so good, then it leaves it more open for us to be able to sell them.
I guess I misunderstood, sorry, and I, I guess I misunderstood the way it was written here. It looked as if you were attempting to make some or more properties available for duplex construction, if in fact the purchaser of the lot and the builder felt they could come up with a comparable design.
Well, I don't see why if they can, if it can work to have more duplexes in there, like maybe duplex instead of one property that has a secondary suite or a garden suite, if it can work, there's no reason on our end for not wanting that to happen.
I mean, yeah. I mean, it can work, I mean, with, you know, it's all about design and how big is that duplex going to get? And how much green space is going to get left on that lot and, you know, the lots may appear big in some way, I think to most people in general, but really, you know, there are about as many of them as I'd ever want to make them already, so.
Right, just.
You don't want to. If, if somebody wanted, you know, a duplex and each unit was, you know, 14, 1500 square feet, you're already looking at 3200 square feet and generally that's all going to be on one floor.
Doesn't have to be.
I didn't say, but most of it would probably typically want to be on one floor. And then you've got all the garages to add, you know, any covered patios, it really starts to fill up that lot. You know, we, we do have a 35% rule, you know, for massing a lot, you know, for lot coverage. And it just, just want to be a bit careful with that to.
I just wanted to explore, I mean, there's the concern.
Oh, yeah, absolutely, yeah.
And, and taking this and making it, urbanizing it when it's already meant to be not so, not so dense. And the offset is if I can make it dense by providing the proper building form, then that then also needs part of the old OCP's requests and.
Yeah.
It's a balancing act.
Exactly.
In your material, you mentioned that there was a pond in the, on the park side, on the west side that's being dedicated to park. How is that going to be configured into the overall design of the park or linear park?
Yeah, it's right here.
Yeah.
It's, I don't know if you've got the drawing from the survey showing the lots.
There's.
And we apologize that these pages weren't numbered.
On the survey that we have.
The survey, if you look between Lot 4 and Lot 5, if you, almost in the middle of that, there is, that's where there's a pond. It's not very big, I don't want to, yeah, it's, no, if you went down there right now, it was dry, but unfortunately.
Not completely.
Well, it's pretty dry and, and, but wintertime, there's a bit of water there and it stands there. There's a pair of ducks that come there every winter and hang out. And what we thought, the trail would go in behind it. It could go to either side of it and, and it was just a place to walk past.
So you, you would have a trail coming from the Eagle Crest Drive extension?
Yes, yes.
Through, through the pond and up to.
And that trail wouldn't be a straight line, it would, you know.
Meander.
Try to stay away from the trees a bit, as much as possible.
And, and that's something that we haven't said through this, is that it's our intention to develop that trail, working with the Parks Department to do it to their standard. But that as part of the development, we would actually install the trail. It wouldn't be then left for the town to do it later. And we would take out trees that are dead and do some replanting in there with native species, both trees and, and shrubs.
It doesn't need much.
It doesn't need much.
If you look at it, you.
It would enhance it.
Yeah, a bit of it needs help, but most of it's good.
Well, I think you've got a tree vegetation management plan in there, which this would be incorporated into, I believe, would it?
Yes.
Yes. Those are my questions at this point. Don, do you have anything else to ask? Petronella, anything else come up through this conversation?
Um. You mentioned that your neighbor, your existing neighbor
Yeah.
enters from Eagle Crest?
Yes.
I'm assuming that that no longer would be the case.
I don't know, it would be. So if you look at the survey drawing from Sims Associates, where it shows the road and the lots, do you have that from you?
Sorry, say that again?
Do you have the survey page where it shows the lots and the road?
Yes.
Yeah, so if you look at the end of the road where, you know, shows the cul-de-sac. Yeah, so then that, that road ends at the property line, there's an extra piece. And, and that's where that owner would enter, right at the end.
Okay.
And, and even though the road, let me see, is 23 meters wide, that driveway to the cul-de-sac doesn't need to be that big, it's just a driveway for now. But the town planning requires the 23 meters for something maybe, whatever in the future, I don't know. It, it, they require to have that, that land set aside for services, maybe underground utilities, I don't know, I'm not really sure.
So if you have a, a pathway that goes behind lots eight and nine?
Yeah, it would continue right through.
Cross over that roadway?
Yeah, there would be a bit of, well, I'm not going to say there, that if there's going to be asphalt there or not, I don't know. It could be just left natural too, right, except for the trail. Does that make sense? I'm, I mean, I would have to actually, Petronella, I'm sorry, but I think I'd have to ask Luke the question. How does the cul-de-sac finish? Because we're putting in curb and gutters, so no ditching, all underground servicing. And I, I, I may have to ask Luke, does the cul-de-sac get completed in a circle with a curb and gutter? And then the driveway is just off of the curb that would go into the upper five acre parcel?
Sure, I'll, I'll do my best to answer that one. So yes, the cul-de-sac would be completed, but access would need to be maintained to the land beyond. So it would look like, you know, a big driveway entrance or something like that. It also needs to accommodate emergency vehicles, so, so it's not, it's not a narrow driveway. It's, it's probably on the wider side, because emergency access would need to be provided all the way to the highway.
I mean, yeah, you're right. Yeah, I think Luke just made a good point that we didn't mention is the existing pathway from the highway to this property that runs through is going to be not blocked off, so we may, we may, if we, if we decided between my, our property and our neighbor is to put what they call a breakaway gate, or they, they call them breakaway posts for emergency vehicles. And we've done this in the past in, in the development and it's for emergency vehicles. It could be for fire trucks, ambulance, particularly if they ever needed to get through here or, or the people down below had to get out, they would have a way to go. And I also should mention too, that our property and our neighbor, because we brought services underground from the highway, we also installed four, four two-inch fire hose hydrants. Again, for fire mitigation down the road, I don't know. I feel better having lots of water around if I need it, but it, yeah. Anyway, just I hope that answers your question.
And we likely would never put the breakaway gate.
No, but you can, it doesn't hurt anything, yeah, so.
Okay, and on the east boundary of your property, you're going to on to the western boundary of the cottages?
Yeah.
How does that mesh? Do they, do you know what they're planning on the backs of their properties?
They are planning nothing.
Okay.
They, you look at the tree line that exists today that we have left, is all on our side, if I should say. There could be the odd one that might be on, on their side of the lot line. I, I don't think so though, from what I can tell, if, if there was, it would be just one tree. So they, those lots are not very large. They're building quite large buildings on them, so there's, they're not going to have a lot of yard space. They, they weren't able to keep a lot of trees from when they cleared the land. No trees, I should say, so we've, we, we're creating the buffer on our side.
Okay.
Yeah.
When you purchased the property, which was five years ago?
Five years, yeah.
Station, so was it you then that essentially cleared the, the site of a lot of the trees?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
And for the reason that we could explained earlier about, so that we didn't have to do, remove the trees for the hydro down to the two homes that are existing, which would have been a 60-foot wide path from the highway through the trade preservation zone?
1200 feet of it, by the time it would have been done.
So to, to make that more affordable, that was what we thought, rather than selectively log through the property, like was the intentional plan, never to clear it, but just. never to clear it, but just selectively log. We thought it made more sense to just do it all in that spot. And especially being that we were hopeful of doing the subdivision at some time in the future.
And around our homes, you know, I mean, we, you know, we have, have to build a space, the, yeah.
And do you know, um, the property that's to the west of you?
Yeah.
Um, they're gonna be bordering right on the park that you're.
Yes.
Riding.
Yes.
But they haven't, uh, done any logging on their property. Do you know what their feelings are towards your, uh, proposal?
Uh, yes, um, um, well, they're, they'd be happy to see us and carry on with what we're doing. Um, we've met with them a couple of times and, uh,
I haven't met them yet.
Not Linda, but me and Randy, and, uh, yeah. Uh, she, she's a new owner of the site. She bought it just a couple of years ago. And, uh, bought it from the McLean family. And we had bought our site from the McLean family originally. Um, and, uh, so they were family friends from way back. Um, and, yeah, so I, we, we have no concern of.
Well, and just, this, this irrelevant in a sense, but the McLean family that did own this, um, as well, like Rick's saying, as a big property next door. They had, um, actually looked into developing this whole acreage, this whole sixteen point five acres that we purchased from them. And, and that, you know, wasn't going to work.
Many years ago.
Yeah, long, long, long time ago.
I don't have any more questions at this point.
Okay. Any, any further questions or clarifications?
Are you talking to me?
Nope, Susan.
Oh, no, sorry.
Mark?
None for me.
None? Okay, um, just, uh, I think a clarification on, um, the easterly, uh, property line where you're going to have a three to four meter, uh, tree buffer?
Yes.
I think you indicated in your material and, 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 uh, just wanted to confirm that there will be a covenant placed on all of those properties at that, is to, to remain, so there is a buffer between the cottages and your, your parcel.
Yes, and the, originally, Bill, we, we had hoped that, uh, in the original, um, drawing, w- we had hoped that, uh, at, at one point, uh, include that piece as what we would call park, but that, the problem is, um, uh, in Qualcomm over the years, uh, when there's a park or a green space been left and all of a sudden branches or trees become a problem to a property, uh, that's owned by somebody. The, um, maybe it's that they're not capable of doing the work, but they tend to phone the town to ask for the support to have it cleaned up. Well, I don't think the town wants that. So we're gonna give these lot owners that, that piece of, uh, green space, but there would be a covenant and no tree, you know what I mean? No tree covenant, no build covenant. They can't do anything in there. They could just maintain it, and that's okay. But if a branch falls off a tree, they gotta deal with it, not the town. So I think it's a better way to do it.
How, how would the covenant deal with, uh, tree removals?
Um, I, I think probably we, we, like we have to do here, um, have to have, have a request from the town then to, to, to have an approval to take it down and when it's in the covenanted area.
That's what we've been doing here on our site.
And, and the Chester Road one as well. If somebody, I know one of the neighbors had a big branch that was leaning towards their house, so they had to, um, do everything through the town. I don't even know if they were able to take it down, but, um, the branch off.
Just a concern that, uh, the owner might not even want trees and say, well, I'll just take them all down and then there goes the buffer.
Right.
The other was the emergency access. Is there a covenant then that would, to ensure that that emergency access is there in perpetuity?
You'd have to ask Luke how that will work down the road. I, I can't give you that answer.
Yeah, typically we would establish a right of way over the land, so it, it would establish that driveway as a permanent access over the property.
Okay.
Okay, the, the, the big problem, um, with the, uh, some of these properties that lead off the highway, um, the driveways are so deep and far that, um, you can imagine if somebody calls in and says there's a fire in the forest wo- wo- uh, somewhere on one of the properties and the dri- the fireman shows up and starts going down the driveway, is he gonna go all the way? He doesn't know where the fire is, right? So, huh, it, you know, they want an in and they want an out, so it wasn't very long ago, there was just a fire next door in, in, in the yard of the, near the home, and the fire truck stopped and somebody walked in. So because they were scared, they couldn't get back out. So it, you know, this is a good way to have an in and an out, yeah.
I think it's very responsible, so I just wanted to ensure how it would, would remain here in, in. Okay, is there any other questions that have come out from all this discussion? Seeing none, and, um, let's go into our comments. You can start with Petronella.
Me?
Yes.
What happened to Dawn?
Oh, no, I'm moving this around so that not everybody has to be first. You were last all last week, so.
Uh, my comments. I have a lot of comments. Um, I have a lot of concerns about changes to the O C P. And the fact that it is not in the urban containment boundaries. It seems to me that this is counter a lot of, as I said before, what the town is, I feel the town is, uh, or the residents through their work on the O C P and also the, uh, quality of life survey, I think it is counter to a lot of what is contained in there. Um, I realize that housing has become a major concern, but I don't know that this is a, a good alternative. I don't think it does, uh, fit in with what, what the town has called for. Um, it is essentially, to my mind, because we don't know about the rentals, are people actually going to rent out the suites? Are they gonna keep them as gas cottages? Are they just gonna sit vacant? I don't know. Um, I don't know that it's providing alternative housing, just. Just hang on a sec, sorry.
Last meeting, I had my granddaughter, uh, trying to FaceTime with me and it kept interrupting our meeting. Each of us each week will have one of these interruptions.
This time I have an answering machine.
So, now where was I? Um, essentially, I don't think that, uh, this fits, is a very good fit in terms of, oh-oh. Uh-oh, am I lost? Can you see me still?
We can hear you, yeah.
Okay, 'cause I can't see you.
Okay, uh, maybe Rebecca can.
Okay. No, I'll keep talking.
You're fine. Everybody else see Petronella? Yeah.
Yeah, I can't see you. Um, boy, things are going all, all going. I don't think that this is, I think it essentially, because of the, the question of, uh, to my mind of how usable that rental space will actually be, or how well-used it will be. It seems like more of a maintaining of the status quo rather than introducing any innovative or new forms of housing. Um, and I really do have concerns about it. Out of the O C P or changing the O C P and, and the land use. I don't agree with it. I think that it sets a precedence, precedent for other properties within the, um, estate residential and can essentially pick away bit by bit at that, um, those properties. Um, environmentally, I don't think it's, it's, uh, I don't think it adds to the character of the, the town. It's not protecting the assets, the natural assets of the town. And I guess it's a question of, do we just grow, grow, grow for the sake of growing? Um, or do we make and, uh, good choices in terms of how we grow? So those are my comments for now.
Okay, good. Um, Susan?
Um, I guess, uh, the project to me, if it's, um, it's not, the term was the, um, overmassing, I thought that the, the, the lot use was actually more appealing than putting anything as dense as the cottages that are gonna be in front of them. And so I kind of thought that, to me, the project, if we're looking and having more uh, the tax base for the town, and I thought that sixteen lots being used was actually gonna suit the, the property, if it was to become something. If you, um, if, if the, the land use was approved, it would be very, um, nicely used. That's.
Okay, good.
I, I, and I believe that the Todsons build beautiful homes, so.
I appreciate that comment. Mark? Comments?
Uh, yeah. I tend to, uh, tend to agree with a lot of what Petronella's saying. For me, this one, you know, I can appreciate, uh, the, the really nice developments that the Todsons have done to date. Uh, but this, this property, to me, sets a precedent that, um, I think would take some comprehensive planning before we, as a town, would wanna move towards something like this. I think the estate properties, I mean, it's, it couldn't be more clear in the O C P what the, the, the rec- direction of the O C P suggests, uh, where estate properties are essentially off limits for these kind of developments. So my preference would be that if we are looking to develop these kind of properties, that it does go towards a much more comprehensive, uh, ground-up approach that looks at the estate properties as a whole and then looks at potential options for, um, parcels of those, rather than doing a piece-by-piece development where, um, you know, this is just, this is just one small segment, but, you know, what happens when the next estate property says, well, I wanna do a little bit here, and then, you know, fifteen years from now, we have six, seven of these types of developments. That's not very cohesive and lacks that sort of, um, I guess, some of the goals of the town of when we're entering Qualic and Beach, it feels welcoming and, you know, nature and all this sort of thing, and not just kind of a subdivision, 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 subdivision. Um, I think the, the additional housing stock that has been discussed um, at this meeting and other meetings of ours and the council and in the O C P, where we're looking to introduce density, again, it's pretty clear that, uh, the density increases are intended to be within the village, um, village neighborhood. And we've seen several proposals that meet those goals and work towards those goals, and this one, I think, it's just, it's not, it's not within the village neighborhood, it's not within the urban containment boundary. It's not in line with the O C P's guidelines. It's just, it's just outside of where I think the thrust of the town is intending to go from what we see in the O C P and some of the planning documents that I just, I can't get my head around that, um, that aspect of it. So, you know, the, the development itself, the housing, it looks nice. It would be, uh, looks like great places to live. I like the option for secondary dwellings and that sort of thing. I just, I don't know if this property makes, um, makes the most sense from a town perspective at this time. That's the gist of my comments.
And then we'll be to have Dawn.
Um, okay, I'm gonna be quick 'cause I kinda gotta go soon. Um, but anyway, I'm glad I get the opportunity to say something before I had to leave. Um, so I was a little bit bolder than Petronella and I took a little drive up through the property. And, um, right now, I mean, with, with what the, the Todsons are suggesting, I think it's gonna make it look a whole lot nicer than it does at the moment. And I'm sure that, you know, stuff will grow in and they'll make it nice, but, uh, even though it's counter to the O C P, I do believe that the O C P is a guideline, and, and I don't know that when the committees that put these things together are able to consider every corner of our community. And so we kind of, we use them as guidelines, but at the same time, you know, it's, I don't think it's cast in stone that this is where it has to be. So those, that's just my thought. Um, the, um, affordable housing, if we, like honestly, the same house in Qualic and Beach almost costs a hundred grand more for the exact same thing in Parksville, and it's because we have nowhere to grow. We either go, we were, we're surrounded by A L R on one side and we got water on the other side. And we're not, and we're contained by going this way to French Creek or the other way where we, we meet the river. So if we're ever going to try and keep prices where somebody can actually move here, because right now, we're over, you know, we're six hundred and thirty thousand dollars for the average price in the area, and that's mostly because of Qualcomm and, and possibly Nanus, but we're not getting, we're not, you know, if we don't have more growth for homes and secondary suites and all those things, um, we're not gonna have any affordable housing because we're gonna become the, um, Monterey of, of the Vancouver Island. And that's, that's, those are facts. And then in question to the carriage homes and the possibility for renting and the concern even with the size and six fifty. Right now, trying to find even a multi-generational property is near impossible, so I think this would be a welcome um, addition to parts of the community that are looking for places that do have something so mom and dad can live with them, or that millennial that's still trying to save money so they can buy something, and now with the new rules, and I, I don't need to go in to all that stuff with the banking and C M H C, but they're making it harder. And so I think that we'll see a big need for these kinds of things. So I think that the, um, the rental aspect will actually, down the road, be a major contribution. So those are my thoughts.
Thank you, Dawn. Uh, my feeling is, um, the O C P has, has, has taken very broad, uh, view and approach to how development is to, to happen. And it, and it has the difficulty of dealing with specific requests. Um, when you start to, uh, hang yourself on, on these, uh, broad statements to look at a specific, uh, development, uh, you, you can get lost in, in, in the vision. And you, you miss the reality of it. This, the estate residential is, is comprised of a number of, of important properties, absolutely no question about it. And I think it was brought up in the, uh, on the, uh, tree preservation or protection, uh, diagram that we saw. Uh, and that's the Milner Gardens and, and some properties on either side. This is not in that protection area. Uh, this is at the extreme east end. Uh, we've seen that the current development provides for retention of the sense of the red, estate residential in the two properties that are already developed. If, if, if the six point five acres at the bottom are not allowed to develop in another fashion, there's, that becomes, you sterilize the land. Until such time, as Mark said, the town comes up with, uh, with, with a, um, strategy for the total development. That has been on, I think, the town's plan or, or desk for a long time and has never been addressed, and I'm afraid it's gonna be there for a much longer period of time, which then basically sterilizes that piece of property at the bottom off of Eagle Crest. I, I appreciate what, uh, uh, Petronella is saying about the broad policies of, of, um, keeping development within the village center, uh, the, the village neighborhood. However, Linda brought out a very good point, is that there's no land there. And what land is available is very expensive, which then goes against all the other visionary policies that the OCP talks about in terms of affordable housing and density and those sorts of things. There is a need for this type of housing in and around Qualicum and and this Eagle Crest community certainly would would it would fit into the Eagle Crest community. Let me just go back to the OCP and the estate residential portion. The objectives of it is to protect the forested area, to retain the greenways into town that welcome visitors and 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 bring the ambiance and and the character of of Qualicum Beach. And it's also to recognize the Milner Gardens as an ecological educational center. This does not go against any of these things. First of all, the Greenway, you've got a 75 meter setback already of forest. You've got, you've already created to, as the estate residential requires, two units already on more than 60% of that property. You can't see this development from anywhere driving in through the community unless you're through the the town, unless you come down into the the Eagle Crest community. So I really do not see where this really deviates that greatly from the overall vision of the the OCP for innovative housing, for density. And and landscaping, parking and 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 tree preservation, all of those things are combined in in this application. So I really do feel that it's just one property. It's, I I know what what Mark is saying, that we're nibbling away at it. You take property by property by property. Having said that, I believe that there is a motion that we should be putting forward later. And that's a recommendation to council to get going on an overall plan for the estate residential properties so that you can develop the trails, the parkland development that would be suitable to Milner Gardens and the eventual use of Vancouver Island University in terms of their ecological and studies and services. So I really feel that there is the opportunity for this to to come out of the, come out of the residential, estate residential and still be in keeping with the overall policies of the OCP. Okay, so we'll go around for another round of comments. Anyone want to add to what they've said or counter what other people have said?
Well, I'll just comment that I I, again, I don't think that we should just look at development for the sake of development because we need to grow because we need to grow. I think we do have to look at control rational growth and design. And, you know, there's people that want to develop in the ALR lands, or there's people that are developing in marshlands, or there's people that are developing in want to develop in the estate residential lands. I think at some point we have to say these lands, this environmental situation that is that we find ourselves in in Qualicum Beach is valuable and and is worthy of being preserved. And I don't think that we should just be developing because there's pressure from the development industry to to build. So that's one thing. And you can, in fact, see the houses on this property on the top, you can, in fact, see them from the highway. That's just a little aside. And I really think that that the town, yes, should get going on a comprehensive proposal, but I don't think that development should go ahead until that is in place or at least being looked at. So that's my comments.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to add a comment? Well. And here we are at a very interesting juncture. First of all, to deal with the OCP amendment. So I'm getting a feeling that there's a bit of a division here. I know how I would form the the motion and I think there seems to be three of us that are heading towards saying that the OCP should be amended. So I'm going to put this motion forward, hoping that someone will move it and second it so that we can discuss it and amendments are required, we can do so. Generally, from what I've heard and I've been recognizing the two basically dissenting opinions, I'm going to suggest that the motion read that the APC support the OCP amendment to change the designation of 6.5 acres within the 850 Eagle Crest Drive 2075 Island Highway from a state residential to single family residential, bringing the parcel into the containment, urban containment boundary. So yes, that's, sorry, I had something else there I was going to add, into the urban containment boundary. Looking for a mover and a seconder. Dawn has moved it. And Susan is second.
Are we, are we discussing it or?
That's, yeah, we're going to now discuss the motion. So it is, the motion is to, and I hope I got the wording right, Luke, have I, in terms of?
I think that would, that motion would achieve what I I'm hearing you get now. So yeah, it's effective.
Okay. Then let's discussion. We'll start with Petronella.
Well, I'm just not clear on your wording that says it should be taken out of the OCP and put into the urban containment boundary. Is that what we're trying to do or are we trying to change?
Mending the OCP, to change the designation of this particular parcel to take out of the estates, estates residential.
Right.
Because the town is allowed to now move the urban containment center to contain its development, we need to move it over to bring this property into the urban containment. If you, if you look at the motions that council had first reading out, that that's basically where that came from, that that came from, that's what they're looking for. That's what they're looking to do. That's on after the staff presentation, we had the first bylaw. There were three sections to it.
Sorry, is it on this information that we have?
Yes, it is. It's right after the memorandum. It's it's a bylaw to amend the town of Qualicum Beach official community plan. And the first is to change the designation from a state to residential. And the second is to amend the map or to to amend the urban containment boundary. And the third is to take out what is now a redundant policy or or non-applicable policy where the town wasn't able to do anything that was in the regional growth, growth management area. So that's what council is is looking at doing. Or at least that's what they started to talk about doing, which led us to this. So that's.
I can't find what you're referring to. So do you know what page number?
I don't know because it got numbered. There were two bylaws that came after page six. One was bylaw to amend the official community plan and the other was to amend the land use by and subdivision bylaw. I don't, they are not numbered, so I don't know which is which. Were able to find them.
Yeah, Tom's quote hereby amended as follows. Designation the development part of the whole site from subdivision B to subdivision D.
No, that's, that's the land use. We want the other one. That's the land use. The other one is the bylaw to amend the official ready OCP.
I don't know. Can everybody else find it? Because I'm having a problem.
On page 10 of the electronic version, if you have that.
On page 10, did you say?
Okay, I've got, I think I've got it here.
Yes.
And can you read your motion again, please?
The APC supports the OCP amendment to change the designation of 6.5 acres within the 850 Eagle Crest Drive 2075 Island Highway from a state residential to single family residential. And having the parcel brought within the urban containment boundary or to move the urban containment boundary to include this this property. That covers those items, one or point one and two.
Okay, thank you.
Any other discussion regarding the motion, Susan, Mark? And we have, we have moved this. Dawn, okay. And Susan is going to second it?
Yes. I don't care. Can you see me?
I shouldn't really second it. Okay. Luke?
Yes, I just wanted to to mention something that hasn't come up before in APC meetings. Because I think there's, this is from perhaps one of the more divisive discussions we've had in terms of a split APC vote. So when the minutes come out from this meeting, it's generally only motions that are recorded. So so in the past, the the two people on the dissenting side, I guess you could say, have made motions. And and the other person will second it for the purpose of ensuring that it's recorded in the minutes. So, you know, just being specific to the the situation, you know, for example, if Petronella made a motion.
I see, okay.
If Mark seconded that motion, then it becomes a part of the minutes, even if it doesn't pass. So it's just a way of
Excellent.
So that's an option for you.
Okay, what I'm going to do is is, I think that's a good point so that the minutes or at least some record of dissent is there. I think that's really important. So what we'll do is I'm going to table, I'm going to table the motion that Dawn and Susan made and allow Mark or Petronella to make the counter motion. And then we'll have a vote on it.
Okay, so Mark, do you want to word it or?
If you have something on paper, feel free to start or else I can.
I don't have anything on paper.
I I I think if you simply look at that, the Advisory Planning Commission does not support changing the designation to a state residential and to move the property into the urban containment boundary. I think that's the simple way. Rebecca can fluff that up, I'm sure, but that's really what you're saying.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, I'd add that before further developments are are looked at or considered within this this estate residential area that the town does complete a comprehensive plan for that.
I I'm going to suggest that as a separate motion later on.
Yep.
Okay, as to keep it out of, because it can get muddled in here. I think we need to do that, Mark. You're absolutely right. But I'd like to make that as a separate motion. Okay.
Sure.
So we we have Petronella, Mark moving it and Petronella seconding it. Any further discussion? Seeing none, I'll call a question. All those in favor? I see two in favor and all those opposed. I see three opposed. The motion is lost. So we'll move then to the motion that I made. I'll bring it back off the table. And so do we need to know what that is or? But again, that the APC support the OCP amendment to change the designation of 6.5 acres within the 850 Eagle Crest Drive 2075 Island Highway from a state residential to single family residential, bringing the parcel into the urban containment boundary. Discussion. Seeing none, call the question. All those in favor? I see three that was opposed. I see two. Motion is carried. Thank you, Luke, for offering that. That's a, that's a great way of getting that into the record. It is also helpful to knowing that this audio is going to be heard by people. So those comments are that are germane to other individuals' opinions that can be heard and understood and that we weren't one sided. I think that's really important. Okay, then let us go to the to the land use. Is there any further discussion regarding what is proposed here in terms of basically allowing this to come out of what is ever subdivision district B. I'm not sure exactly what that is. Maybe describe for us into subdivision D. It's, we're not doing much more than that. We're not, there's no development permits. There's, there's no detail other than allowing this to be subdivided into residential lots. Am I correct in that, Luke?
Yes, that's correct. The details get worked out at the subdivision stage.
Okay. So what I'm going to suggest, if there's no more discussion about what was presented in terms of what is thought to happen within this residential parcel. I'll just offer this as a, as a start to the motion. That the APC supports the change in land use for 850 Eagle Crest Drive 2075 Island Highway from subdivision district B. And I think that means that there is no services. Is that correct, Mark?
The current subdivision district would not allow subdivision to smaller parcels. So that's just what the
So now subdivision D does. Yes.
Yeah.
So we're taking it from subdivision district B to subdivision district D. But I'd like to add some some subject twos to it, especially these covenants. I'd like to make sure that the covenant building scheme and design guidelines are are coveted against the property. That that emergency access through the two southerly properties are i- is coveted in a fashion, that the tree and vegetation buffer zone on the east side, running between the cottages and this property again be coveted so that to ensure that what is there stays there and as was proposed. Are those, Luke, would those be subjects, subject to appropriate?
Yeah, absolutely. And those are things that would likely be included anyway, but it never hurts to have. And those are things that would likely be included anyway, but it never hurts to have a.
Oh, I think they're important to the whole development plan. Yeah. So I'm going to make that as a, as a suggestion. Does anybody have anything to add to that or in making the motion? Who would like to make that motion?
Can I just say whatever you said?
And Susan's going to second that, I see. We'll have a discussion. Any discussion? No, call, I'll call the question. All those in favor? I see the three in favor. All those opposed? I see two opposed. It's carried. And that brings us to an end of this agenda, so I would look for a motion to adjourn. Oops. I'm sorry.
I just, just realized, should we have been making a counter motion as well, Luke, in terms of?
You did.
Yes, well, um, there was a motion that Mark started earlier that that didn't play out. So so if you wanted to make that, you could do that.
Okay.
Yeah, I had, I had started suggesting and was.
Oh, I'm sorry. No, I'm sorry. Yes, I'm sorry. I lost track. I do have another motion here, Mark, to your.
Why do you read that one out, Bill?
So what I'm going to suggest here is that the APC recommend that council have a comprehensive land use development design plan undertaken to provide direction for future developments within these, the estate residential lands that would address and balance the importance of the forest and greenway features, ecological importance of Milner Gardeners Gardens and the VIU lands with appropriate urban densification and public recreational amenities.
So I.
Sorry.
I was just going to say that I think the distinction between what Mark was suggesting and that one, there's a lot of commonality, but Mark was saying that that should be done before development was approved. So that that would be the difference of opinion there.
Okay. Excuse me. It is going to what Mark was. If this property is taken out of the estate residential, then there's all that bulk of it that still has to be done. And I think it's imperative that council get on doing what Mark suggested, but exclusive of this property.
Okay, but that's not what.
I'd like to make mine first, and if that gets denied, then we can go with the, with yours.
Okay, fine.
So I think the only wording change would be instead of for future developments, that it would be before we make any developments to this, this, the land within the estate residential area.
Okay, I certainly understand that. So again, uh, so what you're talking about is before this goes forward or any of these changes that we talked about, they have to put together a comprehensive development for the whole area. Okay. Mark has moved that. Petronella seconded that. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor? I see two. Those opposed? I see three. Defeated, sorry. So the counter proposal, the other proposal then would be mine, that we recommend that council undertake a comprehensive land use development design plan to provide direction for future developments within the estate residential lands that would address and balance the importance of forest and greenway features, the ecological importance of Milner Gardens and the UI lands with appropriate urban densification and public recreational amenities. And I can provide this to Rebecca later. Is there a discussion? Nice. Mark, Luke? You, were you going to say something? No. No, okay. And I'll call a question. All those in favor? Three, I see. Opposed of any? Two, I see. The motion is then carried. Thank you all. This is, it was very interesting, very, very interesting. I think we're very, I think it's good that the audio is available for the public to hear the discussion that we had because it was a very healthy debate, and I think it brought in all elements of of the issue that the OCP came from in terms of what the vision of this town is and how we get to it. Um, with that, I'm going to ask for a motion to adjourn. Don, seconded by Mark. Favor. I see Rick's in favor. All those in favor? Motion carried. Thank you all very much.
Bye, everyone. Bye.
Thank you all so much.